invocation please.
Let's bow. Dear Heavenly Father, we're just glad to be able to come here tonight as a group to continue to make our city the best city we can have. Lord, I just pray that all the decisions that we make tonight will help further the quality of life for all of our citizens here in Monroe. Lord, I just pray that these decisions are not made lightly. Lord, we just thank you for this opportunity once again, and thank you for everyone that's here tonight. Lord, I pray these things in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. I'd like to call this meeting to order of the March 12th City of Monroe City Council. Let the record reflect, please, that all members of council are present. I believe Ms. Crawford is on the phone. Myosha, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Thank you for, thank you for joining us. First things first, the agenda needs to be amended to add item one. It's the disclosure of potential conflict of interest related to fiscal year 2024 RDF application under section four, new business, moving the remainder of new business items down subsequently. I need a motion for the approval of the agenda as amended, please.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
I have a motion by Mr. Thompson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gregory. Is there any discussion? Hear none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Here he passes. Moving to the approval of the consent agenda, this is council minutes from last month. January's Planning Commission Downtown Development Authority and Convention and Visitors Bureau meeting in the March 23rd Urban Redevelopment Agency minutes. I need a motion for the approval of the consent agenda, please.
So moved.
A motion by Ms. Malcolm. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Sams. Is there any discussion? Hear none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, please. Motion carries, that passes. Moving to the public presentation for Paige Hood. See my coming up, please, ma'am. And first, I did write a letter to Paige, and I apologize for my, for my poor penmanship. I have nothing to blame that on, other than I graduated from writing when I was 10, and then I just kind of forgot over time. If you don't mind, I'm going to read it. Would you like to say something?
No, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
I know, you know, Rita said you love the limelight, so I just wanted to make sure.
This isn't my stage.
No, I'm so glad you're here, though. Thank you for coming. This is State Citizenship Education Teacher of the Year Paige Hood. Whereas Paige Hood is the, is the high school coordinator at Monroe Country Day School in Monroe, Georgia, and locally adored. And whereas Paige Hood is a good model of citizenship and community involvement, innovation, and the approach of teaching citizenship, use of resources, and passion for teaching and recognizing each student's personal interests. And whereas Paige Hood will now be a candidate to be National Teacher of the Year. And whereas the Veterans of Foreign Wars highly supports the education of America's youth. And whereas the VFW Citizenship Education Programs, Stimu-, Programs, I'm sorry, stimulate interest in America's history, traditions, Americanism, civic responsibility, flag etiquette, and patriotism. And whereas the VFW highly supports the education of America's youth. And now therefore, I, John S. Howard, Mayor of the City of Monroe hereby proclaim the Veterans of Foreign, Veterans of Foreign Wars. As recognized, Paige Hood is the State Citizenship Education Teacher of the Year. And witness whereof I have heron to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Monroe to be, to be affixed this 12th day of March, the year of our Lord 2024. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Next. Evan Newsom. This is really cool to me. Evan Newsom is our newest Eagle Scout. Eagle Scout is probably the, the five percent, five percent of kids who last beyond Wee Blue and Cub Scout actually make it to the level of Eagle Scout. It's a huge achievement. He shares this with many of our presidents, some of the greatest leaders in the business world, and some of the pretty awesome people who've walked through these doors and served this city. Evan, are you here? Do you mind coming up for me, please? Eli Yater, would you come out here too, please? Eli was a, was an Eagle Scout two years ago, and he works for our city. And for all of you who want to surf the internet, have any contact with the outside world, Eli's your guy on that. And we, I don't think we really got to recognize him as much. So I want to tell you much, I appreciate you. And since we had Ms. Hood here from Monroe Country Day School, Eli was a student there as well. Evan is a student at George Walton. I've known him since probably he was in kindergarten. He didn't have all the facial hair then. I'm trying to get him to shave it, but to no avail. This troop, it's troop 705. Troop 81 is the other one from the City of Monroe. And if there's a third, I hope somebody will correct me. Evan did the map and the kiosk going into Childers Park. And if you haven't seen it, it is absolutely beautiful. It was a labor of love for a lot of folks. And, and Mike Newsom, who shall remain seated. Yes, I said sit. Put a lot of work into it, too. And Sam Newsom, Evan's mom, has shed many tears over the, the direction of Evan's life. So we're, we're so proud of where you've come. She really. Other folks who've helped in, in Evan's development, Keith Taylor, who works with Walton EMC, William Chapman, who I believe is a pilot for Delta, Bart Sargent, John and Josh Harland, and Tommy and Bo, and Bo Blanford, who are all citizens of Monroe. Matt Gray's also very instrumental in, in helping you achieve this, and I appreciate each and every one of them. Evan was awarded his Eagle Scout on February 17th, and I believe three palms with that, right? And the three palms are for what?
For merit badges that I earned.
Additional, additional merit badges? What was the toughest thing? The toughest thing you did?
Definitely coordinating and planning the project.
Well, it certainly is beautiful, and I appreciate it. Also, Evan is going to be attending college on a shooting scholarship. He's, he's one of the best shotgunners in, in the whole state. And, and for a person who shoots high and left, I, it's really impressive to me. Dear Evan, congratulations on successfully attaining the, the rank of Eagle Scout, the highest honor in Boy Scouts. This is an honor which few men, few young men are able to attain. Eagle Scout award signifies diligence, high moral standards, and love of country and community. It takes a lot of time and effort to meet the standards required to earn this award, making it an even larger accomplishment. The background will help you to rise up to even greater achievements in the future. Evan, please accept my congratulations on this important achievement, and my best wishes, best wishes for your continued success. I believe we have already mailed this, but take this one, too. Now, for those of you who came to see Paige and Evan, you don't have to sit through all this. Y'all got up mighty quick, though. Thank you for coming. Thank you, Sam. While they're, while they're heading out, I just want you to know, the presentation from the Walton Teen Advocacy Board will be, we'll move that to next month. Moving to public comments, I do have one. Dennis Black. Blake? Blade. Come on up, please, sir. Dennis is, lives in, in Gatewood, right?
Yes.
Thank you for coming in.
All right.
You have five minutes.
Okay, yeah, I just got a concern about Walton County and our solar, solar system. You know, I'm being charged a standby capacity cost for, you know, having solar. You know, with, with the green wave that's going on nowadays and the plant, you know, electric plant going on. I, I spoke with Bryant Thompson, I think it was, about that a couple different times, and I don't know his response. Well, we'll see what you think. I don't have but five minutes, so we'll get through it. You know, I just spoke with him about it, actually, what is a standby capacity cost? And he just simply said that, uh, any event that your system goes down, we got to provide you with electricity. Well, that's not true. Every household and every business has a calculated load, and that's supplied at the secondary side of your transformer. That's the purpose of the transformer at the home or businesses. So that ain't true. And he agreed, yeah, yeah, yeah. And he was cameo, carried on about the cost of getting electricity to the homes and to the city of Monroe, and you have to pay your portion. Well, my portion is like everybody else's. Whatever you use, that's your portion. So I just kind of did a little digging to try to find out what is it and how does it work? And I found that it does exist. However, Oxford, Georgia's city council, they overturned it. So it does, it does exist. It's a real thing. But for us to do that, I don't, I don't, I don't, I disagree with it, and I hope the city council would here overturn that. Real quick, I just have these, you can have these, just showing that the, that just shows Oxford overturned it. And basically, how long I've been, I've been paying it. So I guess my thing is, is just, you know, guys take a look at it, and if you will, just consider that. Don't know how it properly works, but consider, you know, for our citizens here. I most certainly would appreciate it. But I don't, I don't think we, that would be fair to our Walton County. So far, I think it's only two of them in Walton County. So far, with rooftop, so far, I think it's only two. And I spoke with the other gentleman, and he's not getting this cost. So I, I don't know why, and, and I wasn't told or explained why mine would be any different. So you, there, you'll see my bill from when it started and to current. Then also the article from Oxford, Georgia. So I just want to present that to you guys, and hopefully you, you know.
And typically, we don't, we don't respond in, in public comment, but I do want to say that, that if he's in Walton County and you're in the city, that we're MEAG and they're Walton EMC, so we charge things differently. If you don't mind, come step forward. My, my phone number's on here, my personal number. Call me, we can discuss this further anytime. All right?
Well, thanks for the time, everybody.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Blake. Okay. Thank you for coming in. Moving to, to the business items, we didn't have any other people sign up for comment. Did anybody need to say anything and not get signed in? Okay. Moving to business items, Mr. Probst, City Administrator, update?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Speaking of electric and MEAG, Plant Vogal Number Four just reached operational criticality. That's a big, big milestone for us in the City of Monroe and really statewide. So the next step will be some grid syncing, and then hopefully that'll be fully synced to the grid coming, coming weeks or, or months here, hopefully. Coming months. And once we do, I got, I met with some MEAG reps the other day, MEAG Power, and our electric portfolio will be 88.5% not emitting when Vogal Four comes online. That's, that's among the cleanest portfolios in the world, so that's something to be proud of here with that, not emitting. I really want to give a pat on the back to the sewer crew and Rodney Middlebrooks. Throughout all these torrential downpours that we've had, these guys have been playing up with the, the INI, just dealing with a lot of the flooded systems. And man, they have worked so hard over the last few weeks, really all year. We've, we've had some torrential rains. But really want to give the sewer crew a big pat on the back, so thanks to them. And one quick update on the TAP project, Transportation Alternatives Project. So as you know, we were awarded four plus years ago that project that will streetscape the remainder of this north broad section from Marable down to Highland, a portion of Highland, and then down north Lumpkin to Spring Street. Once again, GDOT is delaying the letting of it to December 22nd of this year. And that's just because of a few outstanding right-of-way acquisition issues. They're taking a little longer than expected, but nevertheless, they have confirmed the money will be there. It's just another slight delay in the project. Just want to let you guys know that. And then lastly, as you know, last month, we approved the SPOLOST referendum coming up. Just want to note that that will be on ballot Tuesday, May 21st. Advance voting will begin April 29th through May 17th. And this is, we can only educate folks, right? We can't go and, and tell people to vote for it. But this, this will contain some very critical project for us for transportation infrastructure, public safety capital improvements, other public facilities capital improvements, and parks capital improvements as well. So myself and staff will be putting together some, some info to, just to get the educational word out. And I'm also working with the chamber to try to, they're, they're going to assist us with that educational campaign.
And this is continuation?
This is a continuation of the existing SPOLOST, which has been instrumental for so much of the infrastructure we've been able to, to put in place over the last six years.
Are there any questions for Logan? Thank you, Mr. Probst. Mr. Bailey, Assistant City Administrator, report, please.
Thank you, sir. I'm going to continue on the TAP grant narrative. We had two RFQs that were out for the past month, and we had for the McDaniel portion of the streetscape improvements, we had three submissions that we're currently evaluating with the, the state and their contractors. And then the one for Davis, Madison, and Mears, we had one submission which does not hit the guidelines of the state, so that's going to go back out for bid. So if you see another TAP grant that goes back out, it's to adjust it, change it, so we can hopefully garner some more interest for that. And once again, that's a years-long process going through it, actually getting it to fruition. Great American Cleanup Week is in April this year. I didn't jot down the exact dates, but I know it's usually about that third week, and I say that to lead into our Community Cleanup Day event again this year will be in April. It'll be April 20th, which is usually the weekend prior to the Cleanup Week or the weekend after. So look forward to participation of neighborhoods, churches, different groups to help out, and we'll coordinate that more with them as we get closer to that date. First Friday night concert, May 3rd, and then I think it's been tossed around a little bit, it looks like April 18th will be our initial grand opening of the Town Green. That's on a Thursday. There'll be invites to engineers, everyone, you know, grants, whatnot, that have helped us get this, obviously council, to kind of get this there. We'll have a little more detail of the events of that afternoon, but we're looking forward to it, and hopefully we can work out the kinks of an actual concert at this new facility prior to the first Friday night. Our farmer's market open starts April 6th on Court Street, as usual, and the car show Saturday. I don't know if you've looked at the forecast, but it, it's gradually coming down in percentages of rain, but still not enough. So I'm making all the phone calls I can to try to get that taken care of, and no rain. But if it does happen, we will go March 23rd, and should that happen, should we get rained out then, we will have a car show. We'll find a date sometime in April, and we'll throw this event, because it's the 19th, and I'm, I'm determined the next year will be the 20th. So we've put in a lot of hard work, Sandy Daniels, Laura Beth Caudell. So we're going to have a car show this year. We just don't 100% know when it's going to be yet. I'll be glad to take any questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. Bailey? Thank you, Chris. I'm moving to department requests, Airport Taxiway Crack and Seal Rehab Bid. I think, Chris, this is you as well. Are we skipping?
Let's hit the report. We finished the department reports. Item three.
Right.
Four.
Like, what are we doing? Are we going to the department requests, or reports, or requests?
About the reports.
Like, I can do, I go either way. Why don't you go into Central Services, Chris?
Okay, so we're doing reports. Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Okay. We're changing, so let me back up. We're sorry for the confusion, the curveball here. So I told all the department heads, we're changing it up a little bit on the agenda, going back to have a little bit more of the reporting element from our department.
I appreciate that.
You're welcome. Sorry about that.
Chris?
You threw me. I was first on both of them, so I'm like, which one you want me to talk about? Okay, so Central Services, which is Central Services Buildings, Grounds, Parks, Procurement, Airport, a little bit of everything. Trash collection in the month of February, we picked up a little over 2,400 pounds just on roadside debris with our guys. And then obviously, our terminal building is now open 24/7 to the public. That has gotten rave reviews. Every time we go down there, there's literally somebody utilizing the facility, so it's serving the purpose that we desired when we, when we built it. We have several tea hanger projects that are currently kind of in play. We have two sets that a private individual is working with us to get to an agreement. Hopefully, that comes to you guys next month. And then we have several box hangers that are being kind of looked at and priced by a couple of people that want to lease space and put those in. And then there's a state tea hanger study that was done that I've talked about, that they've come out, that they're essentially going to provide low-interest loans or more grant funding if airports can get themselves site-ready and have areas to build tea hangers, which we have a couple of those. So we're trying to kind of work those forward. And then we have, hopefully, and I don't know if this will come before you guys next month, it depends on where the number comes in for the visitor center, the exterior rehab that we've talked about for a couple of years now. We are working with contractors to try to get that price down so that we can maintain and rehab this facility that's used for our museum and, and a lot of other things that we do. So been working with Kim and Steve and trying to get that to, to fruition, so. And I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. Bailey? Hear none, code report, please, Brad.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have very little to really provide the city council this evening, other than the hopes of that our executive report that's provided to you each month, hopefully is providing enough adequate information about ongoing projects in the city and their statuses with the code department. The Code of Puzzles that we had, you know, six weeks ago back in January, the consultant is back in Nashville now, working on a draft that hopefully staff will see, probably next month, we'll see our first draft of the, the form-based code for a staff review, and that would be something we're looking forward to. The impact fee transmittal that you made to the NEGRC last month, that is currently under review. They've had a public hearing, and we're waiting for feedback from them on the next steps. And then that would come back in front of council at some point in the near future, probably around May or June. That's really all I had for the council this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Cal. Are there any questions for Brad? Economic Development, Mr. Probst?
So real quickly, things are still pretty white-hot in the economic development world here. We will have a new Economic Development Manager start later this month. Look forward to introducing you to that employee. I think March 25th, we'll be starting that. But right now, you know, we're, we're trying to land a hotel at some point somewhere in the city. We're, we're working very hard on that. There, there does seem to be increased interest for a hotel somewhere, but that's about all I can tell you on that right now. But there's still a, a great deal of commercial interest and even industrial prospects in working with Walton County Development Authority. There's still a lot of activity going on out there.
Thank you. Any questions for Logan? Thank you, sir. Ms. Thompson, Finance?
Thank you, Mayor. Finance report you have before you. If you have any questions on it, I'll be glad to answer those. I am working on a more summarized version of the financials as it's been requested, and I hope to have that to you next month, if not the following month. So that'll give you more of a snapshot of what the financials look like, so you don't have to read all 32 pages of that report. But it is there for your enjoyment if you want to read it. Staff is also currently working on our external audit with our external auditors, Malden and Jenkins. We've been working on that daily since January 1, or January 2nd. They were here for two weeks in February, and they're still working remotely, and we hope to have those finalized numbers to you in May, if not sooner. In the Finance Department, we currently have three vacant positions. One we hope to fill in the coming weeks, which is a cashier position that closed recently, and we hope to start those interviews with HR in the next week or so. I'm also working on a mid-year budget retreat with council and department directors that has been requested during the budget process this year, so look forward to doing that coming probably in about May or June, and then I'll give some more information on that as it comes up. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Are there any questions for Beth? Hear none, Chief Dykes?
Thank you, Mayor. In your packet, you will have, you have our data from January, which is a little bit of a step back. If you have any questions on any of our call volume or those statistics, please feel free to ask, but I will say this is, this has been the second busiest January in the past five years, so we're continuing to see that uptick. Last year beat us by, by three incidents. Department-wise, happy to announce that Chandler Jolly and Austin Etheridge completed our joint recruit program with Walton County Fire Rescue last month. They have completed their firefighter one, firefighter two, and are now state cert, in the process of, you know, state certification packets, and they are onboard and on shift running calls and serving our public. Also exciting news, in two weeks, we will have our final full-time spot filled with a new hire that will be coming onboard, so we will be back to full staffing once again. That is extremely exciting for us. More exciting news, got off the phone this afternoon with our sales rep. Two years ago, this meeting, we ordered a fire engine. Today, I received the first pictures of said fire engine on the assembly line. It's just the cab, but we are making progress. So estimated arrival is sometime in the first half of April. So if not this meeting next month, the May meeting, there hopefully will be a bright red, shiny fire apparatus sitting out front for you all to enjoy two-plus years after the order was, the order was placed. On the community risk reduction side, Fire Marshal Range is going to be working with our Utilities Department in-house and starting the CPR program, getting all of those guys CPR certified. And in the process of doing that as well, we're going to start a pilot CPR Saturday program for members of the community that are wanting CPR certification. We're still in the formative stages of that. I don't know the frequency or the class size just yet, but there, that is definitely a need in the community. We get frequent calls on that, so we feel like that's a way that we can start filling some of those gaps of community needs and what we are able to provide. And then lastly, talking about community risk reduction, not sure if everybody was aware, but the week of February 25th through March 2nd, we had four fire fatalities in this county. That is a, that is more fire fatalities than we typically see in a year or even more. We've gone years at a time without a single fire fatality in this county. And that is, that is, that is horrible. And so one of the things I really want to emphasize is smoke alarms in your home, making sure you have them, making sure you have them in every one of your living, every one of your bedrooms, one on each floor and so forth. We are more than happy to come out and assist you or our citizens with installation or just checking them because they work. During that week, at 2:38 on, I believe it was that Wednesday morning, we received a fire in a town home. The occupants on the second floor were alerted by their functioning smoke alarms, and they were able to exit, and that was within 48 hours of two folks in an apartment fire in Loganville not making it out in the middle of the night. So I just really want to emphasize that. If you have questions, concerns, or need help with that, please reach out to us. We have people, we have our guys that are more than willing to come out and work with you and, and our citizens on that, and happy to field. Any questions if you have?
Thank you, Chief Dykes. Are there, are there any questions for Andrew?
Chief Flots? Thank you, Mayor. Just following up from our conversation earlier in the week, Mayor, I pulled our stats, our crime stats. I know that seems to be a concern with the growth that's going on in our city. And there's some interesting numbers here. You know, in 2020, we ended the year's calls for service at 20,453, and last year, we ended with 26,701. So that's a pretty significant increase in calls for service demand on our law enforcement. However, our area checks we did in 2020 was 104,660. We finished last year at 129,777. Our Part One crimes are down by 12%. Our part-one crimes are down by twelve percent, which is really good. Those are your major crimes, your armed robberies, rapes, murders, things of that nature. So, those are down by twelve percent, and our part-two crimes are down by eleven percent, uh, as we ended last year. That's going to be like your bad checks, stalking, things of those nature. And, uh, our arrests are up by two percent, and already this year, we're in March, and I think we're already at about two hundred arrests for the year. Guys are really proactive. I think that's a testament to the additional officers that we continue to add to the department that can proactively meet the needs of the community.
Those, uh, are down year over year, twelve and eleven percent?
Well, there was one year on, in twenty, yes, I mean, across the board on part ones, we've been consistently been going down. Part two, twenty-twenty-one, we were up, uh, a good bit, but in twenty-twenty-two, we went down thirty-two percent, and then in twenty-twenty-three, we're down eleven percent. So, I, you know, there's no rhyme or reason to increase it in part two. Just sometimes you get hit pretty hard like that, but overall, yes, we are down in our crimes. Compared from twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-three, we have consistently dropped. I think that's great.
That's very impressive, Chief. I appreciate that.
And I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Are there any questions for RV? Thank you, sir. I'm sure we'll be back to you in a minute, too. Uh, Danny Smith?
All right, thank you, Mayor. Uh, got a couple of things. I'll give you update on the mattress, um, collection. Um, the fifteen-dollar service fee is in full effect as of, uh, last month. Uh, we're still picking up a lot of them. Uh, as of February the nineteenth, we picked up a hundred and twenty-five, uh, mattresses. About ninety percent of them did get built out. Uh, we are running into places where, uh, there's no service address that we can ID, so we, we still got to kind of nail those down. Uh, but the, um, our vendor, uh, recycling vendor will be setting up a dumpster this week, uh, trailer this week we talked about last meeting, so that's going to help with the cost, um, because, you know, they'll charge six hundred dollars, and we can get quite a few on, on that. So, that's, that's going to be a big help, but we are picking up a lot of them still. That's close to two fifty in this year, count, count January. Another thing, uh, I have, uh, the two side, the, the two automatic side loaders and our knuckle boom truck is, uh, offline due to service repairs, uh, so it's throwed us off, off schedule a little bit. Once they get back up, the, uh, we're going to implement a new routing, uh, probably by mid-year. Uh, these trucks will, um, um, it, it'll be a different service delivery, and we'll put out guidelines to customers showing how to set out, um, a lot of the overflow. Uh, these trucks going to have a hard time trying to get out, dump, get out the truck and dump. So, we asking customers try to recycle as much as possible and reduce the amount of waste we generate. And we, uh, last couple of years, we've generated fourteen thousand tons for the city of Monroe. Uh, our cost was like seven hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars just for us, so we got to try to reduce as much as possible. I take any questions, Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Are there any questions for Danny?
Hearing none. I'm going to move to Jeremiah Still.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Um, just highlighting a couple of areas in the report. Um, as the temperatures are rising, we're getting into a more favorable season, uh, for patching, um, whether it be through utility cuts or potholes. This winter really took a, made a big hit on our infrastructure, um, and we're starting to catch up from some of that now with the guys being able to get, um, a hot mix on, on a pretty steady availability. Um, and with that, that's leading into the beginning of our L-MIG projects. Um, so we'll be out doing some deep patching and some crack sealing, um, on those streets that we're going to be doing the L-MIG work on. Once we get delivery of CIP item, um, that we, we're expecting delivery probably within the next month, maybe by the time the fire truck gets here, um, I'll have a piece of equipment as well that will enable us to do, um, some in-place milling, uh, coal plane, coal planing, as well as a machine that will run it. Um, that will make our process of patching, of, um, cleaning up these utility cuts and potholes, uh, seamless, be, 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 very efficient. Um, and I will highlight the fact that we, we picked up or cleaned out almost seventy-five hundred pounds of debris through the stormwater department just in the month of January. Um, and as we continue to get these big rains, um, those numbers will, I'm sure will remain steady through these, through these spring months at least. Um, one major project that we're about to start is over on Plaza Drive. The guys and ladies that are on the committee, uh, we've made you aware of that, but I'll, I'll use this platform to say that, once we start, uh, Plaza Drive is probably going to be closed for a couple of weeks. Um, there is a major pipe under there that has failed, um, and we're going to replace it with eighty feet of concrete pipe. It's metal pipe now. It's separated. Um, there's no dire stress for immediate worry. The road's still in good shape, but if we don't act now, then after the spring, it's going to be even worse. So, we'll go get that going here in the next week or so, um, and I'll keep everybody updated on that. I'll be glad to entertain any questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. Still? Thank you, Jeremiah. Mike McGuire, telecom?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things I want to touch on real quick in the telecom department going on. Um, first and foremost, status of the fiber rollout. It's the most important thing that everybody always wants to know and talk about. We get calls every day wanting to know about fiber and, and when, when it's coming to their area. Um, to put in perspective a little bit, so, uh, just a little bit over a year ago, we probably had about forty-three hundred customers in total on our telecom plant, and I'd say less, less than ten percent of those were fiber at that time. So, we are, we have grown over the past year, adding customers continually, and we're currently at almost five percent away from hitting a break, a complete even fiber and cable modem customer threshold there. So, I anticipate within the next couple of months, we'll actually have more fiber customers than we will cable modem customers. Um, crews that are, and the contracted crews that are working with our construction team putting the stuff up, they are working through it at a pretty fast pace. They are doing several streets and several subdivisions every month, and, uh, the infrastructure is getting put in faster than the crews that can splice it up can get it done. And so, we're trying to get as many people, as many hands on deck as we can to, to spin it up as fast as we possibly can, but it's, it's going at a very, very good pace, and so, um, we are just fixing, get ready to turn up our northern end of town. Brand-new chassis has been put in place down there, and so there are many subdivisions on the north side of town here that already have infrastructure in place and ready to go once it gets spliced up, so that'll be a, another large number of customers that'll be ready to get fiber service with us. That's where we stand on that. The, the other thing I want to touch on is streaming TV. We are very, very, very close. In fact, hopefully by the end of this week, we'll be ready to start sta, signing customers up for our streaming TV platform. We are just putting the final touches on everything, dotting all the i's, crossing all the t's, making sure it's, it's up to speed with the way we want it to. Uh, and we will make sure that our customers, I don't know if you've been in City Hall here recently or not, but you've seen the big TV that's up there. It's currently running our streaming TV platform on it to demo for our customers so we can show it to them. We will have documentation and literature there for them to take home with them. It gives them a complete breakdown of what the pricing is, what channels are on what tiers, frequently asked questions. Hey, if my TV does, is not a smart TV, can I, can I get this, et cetera. So, that is being finalized this week, and we'll go, be ready to go for print to turn up, and we'll be ready to go on that. It's about two-hundred-and-thirty channels, and of those two-hundred-and-thirty channels, sixty-five percent of those channels that are on there are channels we already carry now. So, our customer is actually going to gain access to about thirty-five percent of new channels on that, on that platform, and those of us that have it, an opportunity to test it and try it out, it's been very nice. Uh, cloud DVR functionality, no boxes required, everything is done within the app itself. Um, you can move multiple devices at one time. In, in my opinion, it is a, it is a nice step forward, uh, as far as what we offer for TV for our customers. So, that is coming very, very soon. Two other things I just want to touch on real fast. Uh, we've got a new hire position that just went live last week, what, what people around the office are deeming as the Geek Squad. Uh, it is a, basically a telecom support technician role, somebody who will not only come in and field support for our customers as far as phones in-house, but we will also be able to use this individual to make house calls, send them out to the customer's house. If a modem gets damaged, say, during an electrical storm, rather than having that customer have to bring that thing up here, we'll dispatch somebody out to your house to take care of that for you. So, we're looking to transition a lot of those calls that customers would come into City Hall to get, to get resolved, to taking that out to them and handling that on-site for them. And also for other problems where, if it's maybe not a bucket truck roll, if it's not a line down or the service up, but the customer still can't get their service, we've got somebody now that can help facilitate that troubleshooting process to determine, hey, this is, this is the problem. It's either this or this, and here's how we resolve that. So, we hope to start interviewing people for that process next week. Um, I am personally very excited about that. I've been wanting that for, for a good while, and so I think that is going to be a, a huge help for our department. And last but not least, a, a shout out to, uh, to David Garcia, Scott Emrick, and Eli Yater. They passed their Calix Wi-Fi Technician Specialist Bundle, that's a mouthful, uh, class, which basically gives them the knowledge and, and the ability to, when we go and install our in-house Wi-Fi to our customers, the best practices, the ins and outs, hey, here's the things you want to look for, here's what you want to do in this situation to get optimal Wi-Fi coverage in the house, and so they'll be able to take that knowledge and share it with the rest of the team on top of that. So, any knowledge gained is always a, is a good thing in our department. So, we're proud of those guys for passing that, and I'll take any questions you guys may have.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. McGuire?
I know this is really not your area, but do we know about the AT&T Tower off Knight Street, and do we have any updates?
Yeah, um, that one is not going forward with them, but we are in conversations with AT&T about other possible locations. Victory, Victory Drive.
Our Victory.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Is there still a plan for citizens that are switching over from cable to streaming? They may need a little help getting out of the gate.
Yeah, that, that's, that's part of what this, this new position that's being created. Uh, we hope to have two by the end of the year, and that, one of their main focuses will be to assist in situations just like that.
Perfect. Uh, I have two things. One, um, we're still planning on cutting cable on the thirtieth of June, correct?
I would like to, yes. Uh, I want to give, obviously, everybody as enough notice and time as, as I can. Uh, I, I would say worst-case scenario, if by the end of the year, no doubt, but, uh, it may be a month or two, just a little bit further. Uh, just, I just want to make sure everybody's got enough time and enough awareness.
Okay. Uh, and we're, we're doing, are we adding something to our, our bills showing the cable, um, offering when we, the cables?
Yeah, it has, it's been discussed to provide mailers to all of our customers to say, hey, here, here is the date, the hard target cutoff, when this is going to be happening. So, when that happens, we want to give you plenty of time to let you be aware and know when that situation's going to arrive for you. But, yeah, we, we, we plan on notifying, documentation, flyers. We'll advertise it on, on our local channels as well, so they'll know.
Okay. And then, three, I am so impressed with how your ste, your team has stepped up since you've taken the helm of, of telecom.
We have a good, telecom has a really good crew of guys. We really do, and they work very well together.
We certainly appreciate you, and, and so does the public, so thank you.
Thank you.
Um, moving to Mr. Middlebrooks. Rodney?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just a couple, uh, updates on some of our large projects. Uh, the Jack's Creek Rehab and the water plant clearwell hasn't been completely finished. Uh, the punch list is finished, and both are operational. Our next two big projects will be the five-hundred gallon, uh, finished water storage tank. It's elevated tank going at, uh, Cherry Hill, and then our twenty-four inch raw water main that comes from the Icovee. Uh, wrapping up easements and engineering on those two projects, and hope to have those out to bid at least no later in June. And then, uh, all utility departments, uh, are starting the bypass, uh, utility relocations, so we'll be out there for probably the next two months. Uh, quite a bit of relocation taking place, so if you've got any questions, I'll be more than happy to try to answer them.
Are there any questions for Mr. Middlebrooks? Again, Rodney, it's been seamless. I, I appreciate your team, and you've done extremely well, uh, taking over that department. Um, thank you so much. Uh, moving now, uh, for the second attempt, airport. Mr. Bailey?
Now, I got it. Um, so this is a request to council for the approval of our taxiway crack seal rehabilitation bid that came in on March first, and if you look on the paper, the original budget was three-hundred-and-ninety-three thousand that we were given for this project by DOT and our engineers. The low bid came in at ninety-nine thousand seven hundred ninety-five dollars. That was with references followed up. Uh, company has done work, um, airports around here, so our portion of that for local, being five percent, will only be four thousand nine hundred eighty-nine dollars and seventy-five cents. So, and the awarding company, uh, request is J.J. Cunningham. I think they're out of Pennsylvania, I believe, so.
Thank you, Chris. Are there any questions for Mr. Bailey? Hearing none. I want-
Nothing else to use the rest of that money with, can we?
We probably got a few things. I'll entertain a motion.
Don't move.
I have a motion to approve by Mr. Thompson.
Second.
Second by Mr. Boyce. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Chris. Uh, Ms. Thompson, uh, renewal of property and casualty insurance? I think I saw Mr. Seville come in.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Um, you have before you these printed, um, green and white papers. Um, these were not included in your packet, um, due to some coverages that we, um, won't disclose to the public, but, um, you have before you the property and casualty insurance renewal that is effective, um, the beginning of April twenty-twenty-four through April twenty-twenty-five. Um, this coverage has increased, as with all insurances, you may notice, on your personal insurance as well, um, has increased, um, and this is about a thirty-five percent average, and Bob Seville is here to answer any questions with Seville and Associates.
Hey, Bob, thank you for coming.
See y'all. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I think everybody has the sheet here, and, uh, there's, uh, this is a general trend in the industry as a whole, as you may have seen on your homeowners and some of the other things. Uh, I was shocked when I opened my homeowner's bill. Uh, but, uh, part of what's driving this, uh, is travelers and the insurance industries increased a lot of the exposures, and if, if you look at the red, sort of the red, red, uh, type in the middle there, you'll see that, uh, uh, property insurance went up about fourteen million. So, part of that, most of that is repricing of the replacement cost for the utilities and for the, this building here and for, uh, the police station and that we just, uh, added on in the shopping center. Most of that's coming through those larger buildings that we have. So, it's a pretty significant increase. And then, if you look up, uh, to the second, uh, set of matrix where your automobile is, you'll see that there's, we have about twenty more than we did last year of the, uh, power units. Uh, the, if you look to the right, uh, you'll see that the deductibles went up a little bit, uh, not nearly as much as what we're seeing in most cities, uh, but the property went up, uh, some, and that's somewhat driven by the increased values. Their, the deductible tied to the amount of coverage you have, like if you had a larger house, you would have a higher deductible, and the same thing happens here. Uh, the second line of that property section, uh, is the, um, warehouses, uh, that we have leased out that we just acquired, so that's some new property, and we've also added the, um, the terminal, uh, is on there now. And so, uh, those were some of the driving forces of that. Um, also, the law enforcement deductible went up. We talked about that last year, uh, taking it twenty-five thousand, and they gave us an option to go to fifteen, uh, but they didn't give us any option this year. And part of that is driven by claims, and some of that is driven by just the market environment as a whole, whereas today, uh, what used to be a small claim turns out to be a large claim most of the time. Uh, most, most attorneys don't, don't settle the claims like they would in the past. Uh, so, those are most of the, the, the rest of the items that I have not highlighted did not change a whole lot. Um, and then, then you've got the, uh, insurance market as a whole, where we're seeing, uh, this is about the increases we're seeing on cities that have had a little bit of adverse experience, uh, across the board. bit of adverse experience across the board. Y'all have any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Seville?
And this is within well within the budgeted numbers, because Bob was able to give us this increase while we were working on the during the budget process. So this is budgeted.
Yeah, we we started that back in October to make sure we were budgeted properly.
That works. Anything, any input? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Thank you, Tyler.
Second, Matt.
Second by Ms. Malcolm. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Thank you for coming in. I appreciate your explanation. Yes, sir. Moving to weapons upgrade, Chief Watts.
Thank you, Mayor. We're bringing forward the council night recommendation to approve a weapons upgrade at the police department. It's going to be a total cost of 91,569. And what we're going to be doing is trading in our Glock 17s to upgrade to the Glock 47 L E s with the Trigicon RCR red dot sight. And what that is, I don't know if you I'm sure some of you guys in here carry weapons understand that red dot sight, it actually allows the officer to acquire target a lot quicker and be more accurate with the weapon system. And I can tell you right now, at 51 years of age, I can appreciate it because you see me sitting here with glasses. I can't see the sights as good as I used to. And that is part of these officers retaining and maintaining and keeping their certifications. You have to shoot a qualifying score every year, or else you lose your arrest powers, the ability to be a police officer. So we're wanting to upgrade to those service weapons. And then we're also asking to upgrade our Smith and Wesson rifles that we've had, I know, for at least 15 years. They're starting to break down on us to purchase 30 Daniel defenses. And that will allow us to outfit every sworn officer in the department with a long gun and that service weapon with the red dot sight on it. And we'll have to purchase holsters for those as well. So.
Thank you, Chief. Are there any questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the request.
I have a motion by Mr. Dickinson to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Sams. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Moving to Danny Smith, purchase of solid tires.
Thank you, Mayor. We're asking your approval to purchase four solid tires for the John Deere loader at the transfer station at 30,850,82. The price include freight and a service fee. And this these the lifecycle on these tires run by 18 to 24 months. So the last purchase was in 2022. And I take any questions that you might have.
Thought about getting into the.
Budgeted item? Yes, yes, it's an operating budget.
Thought about getting into the tire business.
Well, the press fee, the service fee is when they'll come out on site and press these tires on our existing rims. In the past, we've purchased the entire assembly, the rim and the tires, and and the metal went up pretty pretty expensive. So so we're going this route.
Are there any questions, Mr. Smith? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
I have a motion to approve by Mr. Thompson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Boyce. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Thank you, Danny. Moving to new business, application of spiritus liquors and beer and wine on premise consumption, stadium stadium lounge.
You've got your added item that you need to do before.
Oh, we did move that, right. I'm sorry. Thank you. Moving to the disclosure of potential conflict of interest related to fiscal year 2024 RDF application under new business. So moving the remainder to new business. I don't know exactly where we need to go with this, Logan.
So that is going to be item new item G. They have the conflict of interest for that RDF grant for Tyler Gregory to state a conflict of interest officially for the record.
Okay. So so we're so we're all right. We're we're on page at A.
Yes. Sorry about that. I thought you'd said you moved it to A. Sorry, it's G.
We'll come. We'll come back to you in a minute, Tyler. Thank you. Application for spiritus liquors and beer and wine on premise consumption, stadium lounge, is Sumit Sonamendi present? Thank you. Did you want to say anything? Typically, you don't have to. Okay, thank you. Is applicant application in order?
Yes, that application's in order, Mayor.
All right, thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
I have a motion by Mr. Boyce to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Sams. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Thank you for coming in, sir. Appreciate it. Moving to the final plot of Bell Street subdivision, Mr. Callender.
Thank you, Mayor.
I did have a slide for you that was shown the final plot there, but this is for a there we go. This is for a major subdivision of a property. It currently exists in three lots. They're asking to subdivide it into four. The property was previously subdivided under your administrative rules for minor plats, and therefore, any further subdivision requires city council approval. So this is three existing lots. They're proposing to have as four. Two have two homes on them now, or one home on each lot. Those face Church Street. The two new lots will face Bell Street. It's pretty straightforward. Recommendation is approval as presented without conditions or corrections.
Thank you, Mr. Callender. Are there any questions for Brad? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
A motion to approve by Mr. Dickinson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Malcolm. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Moving to the project framework agreement for the TAP grant project, Mr. Probes.
Thank you, Mayor. As Mr. Bailey alluded to earlier, we have two different TAP grant projects that we've been awarded for, at least for preliminary design and engineering. And part of this is just a formal agreement that we have to approve the project framework. It says, hey, yes, we're going to abide by all your rules, G dot. And there's one for each of the TAP grants. That's project 0019856 is this one. And the next one will be 0019857. So one of these, the first one is for the Davis South Madison and Mir Street, and the second and and the other one is for McDaniel Street from Pinecrest to Michael Edgerton. But for this purpose, we'll do item number C, the 856.
Okay. Are there any questions for Logan? I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Give it to Mr. Dickinson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gregory. Is there any discussion?
So these are not related to the TAP grant from four years ago.
Correct. These are new ones that we're putting.
Right. And they could take.
Yeah, they could take another four or five years themselves. Yes. Well, it's a lot of money. It's a lot of money that we would otherwise have to come up with locally. So it's worth exploring the process.
So from Pinecrest to Michael Edgerton, and we have sidewalks already to Pinecrest, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, all the way. So good. Any additional comments? I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Oh, we did the vote. Sorry, we didn't call. I didn't call the vote. I've got two pieces right here. All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Now moving to the next one, of which is just the other part. Did you have anything?
Yeah, this is just project 85, ending in 857, same deal.
Okay.
8020.
Any additional questions or comments? I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Ms. Malcolm and a second by Mr. Thompson. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Moving to the approval of the preliminary plat moratorium ordinance. Logan, you want to talk about this a minute?
Yeah, so we we've done a few of these moratoriums in the past. And as well noted in the the moratorium proposed here tonight, this ordinance, we need to ensure that we have adequate wastewater facilities for a lot of our growth and development that is coming forward specifically in the residential major subdivision realm. So that's the 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 general gist of it. Now, this moratorium does allow for continued building, growth, and development in our what we define as the city core, which is defined as central business district, LCI study area, downtown development area, and the urban redevelopment agency area. So that's what we're defining as our general city core. So we have we have applied with Georgia EPD to go ahead and begin the process for the the first steps of a new and expanded wastewater treatment plant. You just heard Rodney say we just completed the rehab project. There's only a rehab project that only gets us to where we need to be for the numbers we're at today. Gets us in the 21st century. For more capacity, we need to go much further, and it's a longer process. And we need to carefully manage our growth and development as we move forward, keeping wastewater forefront in our mind. I don't know if you want to add anything to that.
The only the only thing that I want to mention is we and we do have a lot of a lot of properties that that have already been approved within our city boundaries. And we want to make sure the folks who live here can flush the toilets. I mean, that's as simple as as it gets. Are there any other questions for Logan?
You need to add anything, Paul?
If y'all are going to consider passing this, it's been prepared such that we would ask that you consider a vote to waive second reading pursuant to your Code of Ordinances 2-96, which is allows a waiver of the reading to occur with a three force vote. And then that way it could be passed and be in effect this evening.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to waive the second reading.
Make that motion.
By Mr. Dickinson to waive. Is there a second?
Second.
I'm going to give that one to Ms. Sams. Is there any discussion?
Was that Ms. Brown?
Yeah, it was Ms. Brown.
All right.
No, well, Tyler said it, and she said it, so I was just going to give it to you.
Okay, all right. Good work.
Sorry, Adrian. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that will be waived. Now I'll entertain a motion to approve the moratorium, please.
Move to approve the moratorium.
I have a motion by Mr. Gregory. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second by Mr. Dickinson. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Thank you. Thank you very much, everybody. Moving to the resolution of the 2023 budget amendment, Ms. Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor. The resolution you have before you is to amend the 2023 budget that was adopted for operations of last year. This is to be in compliance with our financial policies and also the state of Georgia. This will also allow us to move forward to finalize the 2023 financial statements. I will note that the overages do not indicate being over budget in any negative way. Rather, most overages are offset by increased revenues of operating funds. Overall, what we're doing is we're moving 2.1 million dollars was budgeted in the general fund for the Town Green Grant. Those expenses were mainly in the SPOLOX fund, so we're moving that budget to the SPOLOX fund. So that's a reduction of 2.1 million in the general fund, increasing the SPOLOX fund of 2.1 million. And then general fund revenues came in at 1.118,162 dollars over budget. So we're increasing the budget. The net effect of that is a decrease of 946,178 dollars in the general fund in revenues and expenses. And that's the summary of the narrative that I emailed out to everyone yesterday. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Is the 2.1 million moved into SPOLOX fund? Is it restricted?
No, it was for the Town Green Grant, which the expenses were already there, the revenue's already there. I just need to move the budget there.
Okay, so you don't. There's no project you're spending it on. It's just.
When we received the grant funds from DCA for that project, it went into the SPOLOX fund. We're just moving the budget there. So it was for that project.
Okay.
Any other questions for Ms. Thompson? Council wish to have the ordinance read? Yeah, thank you, Paul. I'll entertain a motion, please.
Move to approve.
A motion to approve by Mr. Gregory. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Thompson. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Now Tyler Gregory, this is a potential conflict of interest related to fiscal year 2024 RDF application. Would you like to take it, Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, as required by the Georgia Department of Community Affairs Guidelines for Conflicts of Interest, I publicly disclose that I am an employee for Allen Smith Consulting Incorporated, who is handling the 2024 RDF application for the city of Monroe. Furthermore, I declare and publicly disclose that I was not part of the meeting or selection process which chose the proposed target area. I will abstain from voting on any matters regarding this project during the application phase, and if it is funded, as well as the selection of Allen Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Gregory. I appreciate you you're being here and and.
My pleasure.
For foregoing that participation. Is there anything we need to do to formally accept that disclosure?
Just we need to note for the record that he has removed himself from the days, from the chambers, while this particular matter is being considered your next agenda item.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. Moving to the resolution for spot basis slum and blight, Ms. Thompson?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is just a formality of a resolution to declare 208 South Broad Street, which is the old Ford Building, as slum and blight. This is so that the city can move forward with the RDF funding for this project. The grant administrator and the developer is here. If you have any questions, Deborah Smith with Allen Smith Consulting can answer probably any question you may have more than I can, or if you want the resolution read.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Does anybody have any questions? Or Ms. Smith, or Mr. Draper? Hearing none. I would like the resolution read, if that's okay.
Sure. This is a city of Monroe resolution declaring a spot basis slum or blight national objective for purposes of Georgia CDBG program per 24 CFR, Part 570.483 Sub C Sub 2, whereas the city of Monroe is submitting a CDBG application for consideration under the Department of Community Affairs Redevelopment Fund Program. And whereas the application must document that at least one of the national objectives of Title I of the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974 as amended will be met. And whereas one of the required national objectives is the elimination or prevention of slums and blight. And whereas the city of Monroe has documented that the building located at 208 South Broad Street, the old Ford Building, is a blighting influence under local standards detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare, and that the property's deterioration is negatively affecting the surrounding neighborhood, community facilities, and local tax base. And whereas the city of Monroe proposes to develop a contract with the downtown development authority of the city of Monroe, who will alleviate the aforementioned blight through the use of CDBG monies to implement certain building stabilization, preservation, and rehabilitation activities that the city of Monroe has determined meet the local and federal definition of activities which aid in the prevention or elimination of slums and blight on a spot basis per 24 CFR, Part 570.483 Sub C Sub 2. And whereas the city of Monroe feels that the rehabilitation, preservation, and redevelopment of the area is necessary to facilitate the elimination and preserve and prevention of slums and blighting influences on the surrounding area, and that these actions are necessary to the public health, safety, and welfare of the city of Monroe. Now therefore be it resolved, the city of Monroe hereby approves this resolution so adopted and made effective this 12th day of March 2024. That is the resolution, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. I'll entertain a motion, please.
So move. Move to adopt.
I have a motion by Mr. Boyce and a second by Mr. Dickinson. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Thank you, everybody. Moving to the resolution of retail package sales to be put on the ballot, Mr. Probes. Thank you, Tyler. Mr. Probes?
All right, Mayor. We have before you a resolution that will allow for retail package sales to reach the ballot for the November 5, 2024 general election. It simply will ask, shall the issuance of licenses for the package sale of distilled spirits be approved, yes or no? So it's a multi-step process. This is kicking off the process. If approved, we'll send this over to the elections office. It will make the ballot in November. And then. And then if approved by the municipal voters, uh, there will be an updated ordinance prepared by staff and legal counsel for subsequent adoption. And then, you know, we'll formulate those rules within, uh, the ordinance as to how we'll, uh, allocate those stores or store.
Perfect. Are there any questions for Mr. Probst? Does the council wish to have the ordinance read?
I think we should.
Okay, please, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution initiating voter referendum to authorize the issuance of licenses for the package sale of distilled spirits. Whereas with recent amendments to O C G A third, three, four, forty-one, allows for a voter referendum authorizing the issuance of licenses for package sales of distilled spirits to be conducted upon the resolution of a municipality's governing authority without the written voter petition that was previously required under Georgia state law. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and city council of Monroe, Georgia, while in regular session on March twelfth, twenty-twenty-four, as follows, that a referendum election be initiated to authorize the issuance of licenses for the package sales of distilled spirits within the city of Monroe containing the ballot question set out below as dictated by O C G A three, four, forty-two. Shall the issuance of licenses for the package sale of distilled spirits be approved? Yes or no? Said referendum election shall be noticed and conducted in conjunction with regularly scheduled general election to be held on November fifth, twenty-twenty-four. So resolved this twelfth day of March, twenty-twenty-four. That is the resolution, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. Have any questions for Paul? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
A motion by Mr. Boyce to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Sams. Get it, get it right with your voices. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Uh, moving to district items. Anyone have anything to report, uh, from your district? Ms. Malcolm?
Not at this time.
Ms. Crawford?
No, I don't.
Thank you, Mosia. Mr. Boyce?
No, sir.
Ms. Sams?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Brown? Mr. Gregory?
I'm just thankful again for Mr. Middlebrooks and, uh, several other folks who have helped with all this drainage and stuff. We got a lot of that going on in District Six, and I know that a lot of my folks are happy that they're out and about taking care of things. Appreciate you, Jeremiah. So, thank you very much, everybody who's working hard to keep us dry.
Thank you, Tyler. Mr. Thompson?
I don't have anything for our district, but I would like to make one comment on, uh, what Mr. Probst said. Just want to make sure everybody really understands about Vogel Four coming on and how, what kind of shape we're in for the city. We are in excellent shape of being non-emitting. These big corporations look for non-emitting cities to come to. They'll build solar farms to get to where they need to be at. And this city is going, is in good shape for many years to come. If the carbon emissions rule goes into effect for the federal government, that's gonna be requiring cities to go to ninety percent non-emitting. So we're almost there. Don't have to spend any money, which means we don't have to go up on our rates significantly. So I just want to make sure folks understand that. City of Monroe is in good shape.
Well, in, two, two pieces that many of you may not know, uh, Greg is on the M I A G board. Uh, he's a very strong representative for us. Number one, uh, and number two, uh, as mayor, he made certain that, uh, councils were not going to, uh, raid that municipal competitive trust. And, and that is gonna do wonders for, for long-term rates, and I appreciate it. Mr. Dickinson?
Nothing further.
Um, I don't have much. Uh, we do have a workforce Wednesday tomorrow, correct? Uh, Hitachi will be here, and I think they have twenty jobs that they'll be able to hire for on the spot. Um, and, and many of you know, oh, I, we all know what happened in Athens just a few weeks ago. Um, and I want you to know that, that this council, uh, has, is extremely supportive of our public safety. I appreciate listening to both of your numbers, uh, tonight, and, and you will have our full support to just keep doing what you're doing. And I appreciate it. Um, that being said, uh, I need a motion to adjourn to executive session, please.
Move to adjourn.
Give Ms. Malcolm and the second to Ms. Sams. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign.